Tonight is our audit presentation. The folks, I will turn it over to you for the introduction of guests.
Yes, sir. Of course, we all know that our audit business was major. At least Jewel was here today because of the update. The first time I want to start by with our financing. We even thank everything going on. It's just good and done a great job as well as Agent Jim. And I thank you so much for the performance. You were very proud of my acting. And I think we've done great. And I just want to say that this was prepared before the council before now, but it was something to do for artists from the school and that's right now. She did their best to work as best they could in that. So I'm turning over to Jewel when she can just keep the update.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here to present the results of our audit. For those that may not know, I mean, this is like Jewel or with Agent Jim. I think just going over, you know, the process of the audit. We follow general accepted auditing standards to perform the audit, which provides us reasonable assurance. And reason doesn't do absolute assurance is because we don't calculate every single transaction to the service. So they're all designed to come to a good basis for our opinion. And speaking of opinion, I know that's one thing that everybody wants to know first off, so I'll go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and do some administrative communications and then we'll go over a few numbers. And then if there's any questions, we can address those at that time. So the audit report, happy to report, came before the month past. So that's the result you definitely want to arrive at the end of this process. And so that's where we've got to do Jessica and Austin and the team there working through this to get everything to go through debt testing. And even though we don't look at every transaction, they probably feel like it's every transaction when we put our samples through. So we followed the planned scope and timing of the audit based on the engagement letter. There were many new accounting policies that were implemented in this fiscal year September 30, 2021. The most significant accounting estimates that are significant to the city are going to fall in the government wide statements with the net pension liabilities, generally the goals, net debt, open debt, and then the principal liability of property and equipment. Just mentioned, you know, working with Jessica and Austin and their team there was able to look through everything well. And as far as we know, there were no consultations with other counselors. Do we need to communicate? Excuse me. We also do through the process, our audit's not designed for internal control opinion, but that's a part of the process is looking at that so that we can, our plan to perform our procedures, taking that into account as we select those samples. So I'm happy to report that in terms of internal control deficiencies, any fraud, that kind of thing, that we did not allocate any of that in our procedures. So to round out our presentation here, we fast that there's a representation letter that Mr. Folks and Jessica will be asked to sign based upon your approval tonight. And as far as you know, we can have a significant amount of discussions management, just the normal course of performing the audit. So that's the administrative. Now let's get into the fun stuff with some numbers. And I'd like to have to turn over your folks to page A5 to A6. That's going to be the dollar amount funds, balance sheet. And looking at that, our, you know, this is going to house the major funds. Those are ones that have significant balances and certain criteria. There's a whole lot to determine those. The general fund, the credit line, debt service, American Rescue Plan Act, and capital improvements are the major funds for fiscal year 2021. The non-major funds are in aggregate at the end of that page and the individual detailed statements can be found on C1 to C8 of those. So we like to focus on the general fund as that is the operating fund listed. And so looking at that total assets is at 20 million minus 75. Total liabilities and inflows just over 11 million at 11 million, eight, nine, seven, one, four, three, leaving you with a fund balance of 9 million, 77, 862. And that is an increase from last year. We'll see that on the next page or on subsequent pages here. So, you know, increasing that fund balance is a good way to end a year. And looking at that, let's go ahead and turn over to A5, A7 and A8. It's going to be the sitter of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for the government funds. And I've told you still on the general fund, that net change at the bottom is an increase of the fund balance, the 1 million, 414, 668 for 2021. So that's a 22% increase over 2020's increase. So it's always a positive position to be in. Looking at that, keeping with the general fund, we look at the statement of budgetary highlights and that's going to be on page A11 to A13. We did have a couple of areas that the actual expenditure exceeded appropriations in general government, public safety and economic development. And those are all noted on page 22 as part of the part of the case. Keeping with the general fund, one of the things we like to kind of present to you so that you can analyze is the overall health of the general fund in terms of fund balance versus expenditures. So looking at the fund balance at September 30, 2021, with that 9 million, 77, 862, in comparison with total expenditures of 37 million, those 78, 696. Looking at that, you've got a 25% or a three-month timeframe where you could operate without bringing any more revenue. So that's a healthy, the recommended range is 16% to 33, so you're right there in the middle or two to four months. So falling within those ranges is good benchmark and, you know, just based on the operations and decisions handed out per month. So if you have other, the notes to the financial statements go into further, they start on page 19 and they give more depth into some of the areas that we've looked at. So if you look through those and have any questions, feel free to reach out to me at any time. That kind of is the summary of the audit report itself. Is there any questions or areas that you would like to discuss?
Anybody? Voice is really low.
Once again, we thank you for the opportunity to provide your audit services. We enjoyed working with governments and especially the city of Amsterdam here. So if you have any questions, I'll leave my part for you if we have to answer them.
Thank you, Agent Jim. All right, Ms. Folks, let's move on to the CPG act.
Turning over very, very badly, we were talking about 2020 reaction one last time. It's not going to be up next, it'll be up next on Thursday, November 3rd.
Right. On June 15th, I emailed you the overview of our CDVG at home for the coming fiscal year. This year, the city will receive 544,919 dollars in CDVG funds and 403,576 dollars in home funds. Of the CDVG, 15% goes to public services, which is about 81,737, 85 cents, 20% to admin, 180,983 dollars, 8 cents. Admin includes the salaries, office supplies, dues and subscriptions, office bill repairs and supplies to include gas, professional services, which is includes our consultants and any training. And then the home funds, 10% goes to admin, which is 40,357 dollars and 60 cents. And we said it's about 15% for the child, which is 60,536 dollars and 40 cents. We received about nine applications for CDVG funding, eight for public services and one for housing rehabilitation and four for applications for the home funding, one for temp, based on assistance for new construction. And I gave you a list, I can go over that if you like, or do you have any questions about any applications that were submitted and funded or our recommendations?
Just a little. One, I just want to do, just a little.
Chestnut, maybe?
Yeah.
Never been any support for 30,000, 60,000?
Yeah, to build an additional home, go toward building an additional home. And if, are there any more questions?
Any additional questions or comments? All right.
If there are no changes recommended, we'll start a 30-day comment period tomorrow and we'll support you all again on August 8th to June 15th because we have to submit by August 15th.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, next item is bids, is in drop off, so if I'm in toward you, if you need to take further.
Folks, for additions that we mainly lead is all our selected individuals, which were in the name of the year, and just combined public orders as well as fox recreation for the story, you know, or those people, so it's the same budget and we can open it and on the next, consequently.
I got a question. You don't get a search, you don't get a, you don't get a search. Or we didn't with the.
I don't know, but I think I did try to do the search, but that's a whole different way we can take that down because that's not, that's not.
We went somewhere, we all went.
The fire was guy, everybody signed.
We went.
Like managed researches and stuff, you know, everybody was like, you, which, my own. We go for this, we don't, I mean, I was running for the nails and looking like a rag doll, I mean, me inside, you know, don't look like a rag doll.
All right, let's, let's move on to item I4, which is on the very end. We discussed at our joint work session with the school board two weeks ago, and this is the discussion for you to extend the sales tax, whether you education fund, which we talked about a little discussion about at the end of the night.
Yes, sir.
Discussion.
So I am the one to ask, I'm modified, being this though, I believe it was Bruce currently is on, or right, and saying we do have to have a motion for, for authorization of the funds to be sent to the school credit.
As drafted, as drafted previously and under this urgent, the funds are segregated from the tax revenues in the designated fund and then expended per as directed by the council.
Okay. So, and this is the way, I don't know how it's written in red in legal terms, but this is just my suggestion and my opinion on how I think it should be read. The school board, we have those funds and those funds are segregated into account, in account of the city specifically for, you know, the purpose of extending that to the school board. What I would like to see is the school board gives a written request of how those funds are going to be used on a plan of action. From that plan of action, there is a motion from the council to take care of the vote yes or no to extend those funds to that, to the school board. What I would like to see after that is done within a certain amount of days or when a project is completed or whatever they're asking to do, that we receive a written report of how those funds were utilized and the how we measure the impact of how that impacted our kids. I just think that there should be a level of accountability amongst the school board and the city council on how we use our funds to impact our children. And I think that that's how it should be read in that. And I don't know how that could be said, saying that there has to be some follow-up before, within a certain amount of days or whether the project is finished, whatever that might be. And if it's specifically tailored to workforce development and career tech programs, how did they use those lines for that purpose to impact our kids?
Are you talking about, and I don't know if money's been?
It has been.
All right, okay. Are you talking about having to report us the money that's already been transferred?
I would like to follow up with the money that's already been transferred because that was not authorized by the council to be transferred. But from that point, I would also like to moving forwards, what does happen when we have a motion to authorize, that we have a written report, you know, of some form of accountability of how these money is utilized? Because it's stating in ordinance that it has to be utilized for this reason. And we don't have all of that, we don't have no level of accountability, but we have reasons to believe that to use for that purpose.
That can be done easily. Well, I mean, as far as, I don't think you can mandate that the board, if they've been given funds already, I don't think that you can mandate that the board provides you any kind of report, but what you can do is you can condition any future distributions on that provided. I mean, you could say.
Well, that's what I was about to suggest is that before we allocate any further funds, we need to know how the previous set of funds, I believe it's about $80,000, was extended. I like your suggestion. I like it. I like the idea of the accountability component in there, not, not by any stretch of the imagination, suggesting it's being improperly spent. I just would like for, I would like for us to not just, I'll take it even step further, I guess, not, I don't want just to report back. I would like for us to figure out collectively, and when I say collectively, I mean us and the school, some level of metrics that we can look at that show that, hey, we got this money for workforce development, we did this and out of this, we were able to train 16 kids that graduated from high school and were receiving a job straight out of high school that paid better than the minimum wage or whatever it is. I don't know what the metric is there, I'm not trying to define that. School board may be better suited to define that based on how it's being utilized, but I would love to see some kind of metric that shows the citizens that the taxpayer money that we're allocating to the school system is being spent in a way that is yielding a positive return for our children. And I don't know how you do that, but.
Well, what about like I said, as Bruce just said, like for, you could say Board of Education shall within X number of days, the expenditure, like as a precondition to the application of additional funds, the Board of Education shall within X number of days, shall within X number of days of the expenditure of said funds, provide written notice to the councils to the purpose of the expenditure of said funds that thereafter periodically or in a quarterly, since we'll be quarterly, as to the impact and use of those funds. I mean, I mean, do we want to have the first quarterly meeting, like obviously we passed this, we can do this whenever, but we need to have the first quarterly meeting when it first to discuss that and then since a part of that would be, you know, they would make the additional.
Well, I think that's general enough and specific enough of it at the same time that it does define it, but it gives us an opportunity to sit as a group and, and kind of define some parameters that are maybe a little tighter in that, but I like the idea of, of, hey, before we're going to give you money, tell us what you spent it on. And because that's what the ordinance requested before, it really shouldn't have been given without the tell us what it was going to be spent on. That's one or two of the damn at this point, that doesn't really matter, but.
I thought, I thought we said that $80,000 was going to be dedicated for.
Workforce development, we're just giving the school system, we don't. They were supposed to make, the original ordinance, they were supposed to make a specific request for the money and how they intended to spend it. And we were to approve it and then they were going to, then we handled the money and spent it, but it's not the way it happened. We just gave you the money.
Recently, we gave $80,000.
I don't know when we did it, but.
Yeah, but recently we gave 80,000.
Eighty to change.
Yes.
So basically, they were supposed to give us a written request and we were supposed to, we're supposed to come to the council and we were to approve it.
Right, I mean, we're not, we're not supposed to. So we, we put measures in to keep us in place and everything being a problem. Let me just say the measures, like Jay's and Harrison said, the measures were in place already, but we really did not never enforce those measures completely. So that could have just put.
We were young.
Right, so, so now we're saying we put it in place and now just, I know which way to go because again, measures were put in place for then people, the school system to come and say, I need this, and the measures were put out. So now we put this in place and then we understand what it has to do with, so finance fully understands. I fully understand because these were.
And it's clear from, it's clear from our joint work session that they didn't fully understand it either.
Right.
So this is an opportunity to hit the reset button to make sure that we, we do follow this process going forward and that they are fully aware of the expectation we'll receive those funds.
So I guess my question is, we want, we want to make them, there was a detailed plan of winter actions for the fall storm and a couple of days later, Truusel was 30 hours, everybody else. Let me give you an example, already we're talking about having one with the Truusel so long, we're talking about that 50,000 dollars. So because I've got the guidance from council, we've already asked, I already have the letter what it's going to be used for with everything, with job description, everything attached to it. So when I bring it before the council, that will be there. And then they will come back and say, this is what he funds, we use for, which is going to be very simple, because that's what's going to get there.
I guess I see it in the same conversation, I see it as asking for something and then I'm turning around, telling them, this is what we're going to use for. I mean, it's going to be a while before we see that total 50,000 dollars spent, it's going to be a year out, right?
But, but you're right, that's going to be a tactical sort of thing because it's going to be.
In some cases, it may be, in some cases, it may be, hey, we need new equipment for this particular VOTAC program and, you know, the new, and of course, the new equipment has arrived, it's installed, it's functioning and the kids, you know, we have X number of kids in the class using it so that there's some kind of measure in all of that.
I guess the moment sort of, I think, I wrote up the building, they tried to do like a better relationship, a worker relationship. And because I know somebody that I don't know who's going to get this, who are trying to micromanage the business, you know, I, I get it, I get it. Because, because they're bad sense, I mean, they deserve it, but at the same time, I mean, this, that was just.
I mean, so what do you have to do?
I think there needs to be a level of accountability. I think that this is taxpayer funds, I think this is about our kids, I think this is about our future leaders, and it's important that the money that we are putting into the school system, we see some sort of fili, or I think that's necessary. Now, I think.
We're admitting, we're admitting, we tried to go by.
We didn't know about. The council did not. We did not know about.
But it's, I mean, we're.
Well, what about, so let me, before we put this to not like as, as amended to this resolution.
We're not, 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 we're not.
No, I liked your language.
What, no, I was just going to make sure, because I had something too, but I mean, so as a precondition to the allocation of any additional funding, Board of Education shall within, we say now you days that are reviewable?
I mean, we need quarterly. So like for example, with the truancy officer, you know, there are some reports that can be done about that, seen through county, county school system and Cooper County school system. So it's not like we're going to get some big rain impact after nine days, but it's going to discuss what's happening.
Well, you know, it's.
So that's, that's a little quarter report. So whether we give them money or not, they just have something to report on there at a time, but when we report it, they need to, they need to come to us, little report of any money that they've received from us, be it at the last meeting or be it a year ago, where, you know, they need to be able to show us where they're spending the money.
We need to be clear on that, any additional funds that we're given and not, because there's a, there's a mandate to allocate a certain amount already. These are, these are additional funds, we want to be on the maybe plus that we give them every year either.
Right, right. Like, this is the reason why.
And the reality is, we need to put this in place now because when you, yeah, when you see things like all the opening its doors and Jax opening its doors and the other things that have come along since this ordinance was passed, the data center, those, there's, that, that number was 80 early on, but it's going to, it's going to double, it's going to triple, it's going to quadruple, it's going to get to a substantial number at some point that they might be coming to us at some point and say, we're going to take that sales tax revenue, we're going to build a new wing on the high school or whatever.
I think.
And that's where I hope that this, I, I hope that this will lead to something like that. So, but it's important to get these parameters defined when there's no money in the kitty, so when there's big money in the kitty, and it will be.
Let me give you an idea, the $80,000 was over the time we put it in place, that's one of the three of them. Now, from the time the retroactive back to 2022, when we stopped on the 19th to now is at 59,000. So that's the way you get, that's the direction we get.
But that's how we're close when you look at, we're at, we're at 89, where this is.
That's what I'm saying, so the 10 is wrong, so.
If there, there's a, there's a $100,000 city for the school system, in addition to what were given for this?
The funds available.
Was, were those funds already allocated for the school system?
Yes.
So that much is city?
It's city.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so as a precondition to the allocation of any additional funding pursuant to this resolution.
It really should be, as far as some of these distribution or the expenditure, if we're allocating it by putting it in, putting it in a separate fund, you want to continue allocating it.
So as a precondition to the distribution of any additional funding pursuant to this resolution, Board of Education shall quarterly provide written notice to the council as to the time of use of these funds.
Can I make a suggestion there? It's not, it's not, it's, it's species not necessary, why don't we put, give the groups and pull it off, pull it off on a tickle of the night and then groups will come back and get it cleaned up next week, for the next week, because just.
Is what he said.
So, yeah, except that I thought, and I don't know if there's a consensus to do it, but I thought you also wanted to require a plan for, you know, that a request be made articulating the intended use and that reports be submitted on quarterly basis.
Yeah, that probably isn't, as far as force explicitly set out, because if you did, you did touch on that, as far as does have a pass, a resolution or a motion, yeah, I agree, it, it used to have a little part. Tight language in there with respect to what they provide us on the front end, so that that allows us to, you know, do whatever from the back end as well. So, yeah, I mean, that, that, that makes sense. You deal with that, Sheriff?
All right, so now, 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 just to get a little bit, the big question, what happens when they come to us and distribute this money and we don't tell them what they need to do?
I think we don't allocate anymore. Or, or we, we, we look at their funding request, you know, knowing, you know, more this one or less.
Well, I mean, I don't know how, how, how far you want to go with this, but, I mean, you could require that they, you know, just like when you receive a grant from our government, you don't spend the money for the grant purposes, you have to repay it. And the reason you have to is because there's a grant agreement that you've signed. Oh, I mean, if you want to make this transactional in that nature, you could have a grant agreement where they commit to spend the money on specified purposes and you, for each alloc, each distribution, you would authorize the distribution and authorize C manager or mayor to sign the grant agreement, and they would sign the agreement and if you wanted to be. if you wanted to be able to require them to pay back, that would be the way to do it, create a transaction.
Well, I think, I think it's one thing to understand that if they decide to get a little bit out of control, we won't have a problem just turning the wall off.
That, that is in your discretion.
Because, I think, sometimes people get a little relaxed, they're, they're, they don't hate it, they don't hate it, man, then they saw it slipping and slipping and slipping, and then then maybe somebody, somebody gets that on the top, or they maybe give us a report that showing us smoke and mirrors, but then if we have to, they have to turn on it, all it goes, you see something, it's, it's about a broken offense, and be three, four million dollar line, because, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Because we didn't, I suppose, when they get to one, they were like, that was a collective bill, or somebody either not doing something, not knowing what they're doing, or somebody just intentionally adds, that's what, because, we wanna, we ought, we wanna be the ones in the school system back to them in the beginning, but if we don't play nice and sane about it, they need to play nice and sane about it, to cover actuality, so, that, that's all.
So we, we can, if, if y'all are gonna give me an opportunity to, to amend this before you take it out, and I think I can probably put language in it in the resolution to communicate that, so that it's clear that, you know.
That is.
Yeah, no, but, let, let's, before we take it, let's get that on, you serve out the, talk about, we put that in the record.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is what we're discussing, move the template so as to tighten the language up, you know, but.
That works, okay.
The most important thing to most of us is that students are impacted, and this is not going for, for more administrators, this is going to the students, and that is, that is critical.
Yes.
Though we cannot mandate what has already been sent to them, is that when our minds took at least requests, you know, houses, I mean, is what it is up to them?
Well, we do, uh, just. Or, I mean, it's. We're not just getting any more, you gotta tell, say, it's got to last, I mean, we, we, we have that advantage right now, that way. Yeah, that's the thing, that, that before you make a future distribution, I mean, the resolution will communicate that, you know, in order to get any additional funding, you have to account for the expenditure of previous monies, uh, and then do so on a basis. The distributions will be contingent on that. So they can say, it's not worth the hassle, or we'd rather go without the money, or they can say, okay, we'd like to have this fine support, so, you know, honor strings attached to it.
All right, so, let's, anything else on the board? Okay, uh, let's move on to item five, most grass businesses.
I have a file, I have, I have, this was presented by, uh, Phil Segley and, uh, Corinna Fores, as we, I know, we've seen their best discussion with council owners that have to talk about properties within the community, and see how we can possibly come up with a way that we can provide our already ordinance, so we can change some things, or what, and they have recommendations, so, on great case, and the talent that they have is outstanding.
Good afternoon, y'all, hello. We all know that's out of here sometime, and we go through this before the complaints every year, about mid-May, and it's gonna stretch through September for grass. The issue with this is, I put some capital beside this, is that the city is responsible for maintaining our properties, and we do that, our local works department is a great job maintaining our properties. The ordinance is written in a factored manner to where the individual property owners are responsible to maintain their properties, and I'm probably under an asterisk, a lot of the properties are owned by the state, so if the state can come and cut them, no, they're not, but the ordinance specifically says that it can be declared a nuisance, but it doesn't say that we have to evade the nuisance. So, I guess where we're at is, we're getting with complaints, we get them every year, Miss Bryant can, can relate to you the numbers that she's got, right, and currently, that's already been declared nuisance, that maybe may not have been evaded, and some costs associated with it, but I guess what we need to discuss is just, you know, exactly how y'all wanna approach this ordinance, and how the city's gonna handle it, because financially, we can bid these properties out, and she's gonna give you some numbers, it's gonna give you some ideas of what it's gonna cost, or we can have local works do it, which is a little bit cheaper, but public works and staffs are already just maintaining their day-to-day operations. They can't, they don't have the manpower or the equipment to constantly add crews and put out, you know, to maintain stuff, it's not our responsibility, it's not city's responsibility to do this. These are private profits, awards of the state, so, I guess that's, you know, just what we're gonna have to discuss and figure out, and what to do. Miss Bryant can give you the numbers for what's been declared nuisance, what's been evaded, and how much, um, you know, that costs to take care of that.
Well, if a thousand, over a thousand properties that we have right now that have been evaded in the past, um, or declared nuisances, if you take an average price of a hundred and five dollars per lot to cut, you're spending over a hundred and five thousand dollars. We don't have that in the budget to cut every single property that's out there. Right now, we have two hundred and thirty-eight cases that are active and open, those have not, uh, not all of those have been declared nuisances yet, but at a hundred and five thousand, uh, or, I mean, a hundred and five dollars, we're looking at almost twenty-five thousand dollars, just to cut the open cases that we have right now. We get complaints all the time, and people say, well, you used to cut this, you know, this is a wooded forest area, we want, you know, this cut. We don't have the ability right now, what we're looking at is for the fire marshal and myself to determine the seriousness of the grass issue, if it is just an unsightly issue, that is not gonna take priority over the health and safety of possibly a neighboring property. If the grass is drying out, somebody, you know, flips an ash in there or something, uh, where it could catch fire, so we will evaluate the cases and put them in priority for cutting, we would like to know, would you guys want us to go ahead and start bidding these out with the funds that we do have, and then be able to allocate for next year, knowing that this is gonna be a continuing issue?
Sir, to follow up on what you're talking about, Kat and myself, with the central office of the fire marshal, will look at each one of these situations on a case-by-case basis. So, our determination is gonna be based off the safety, and that safety is open to interpretation, because one person's level of safety to another is gonna be different. So we're together, because even ours is gonna differ a little bit, so together maybe we can come up with a reasonable degree of safety that we're gonna have, you know, abate. But if it's declared a safety issue, then those lots will take the residence, and we will get those cut through the proper processes as best possible. Um, now, when it comes to lots that have previously had structures on, those structures have been removed, okay? The way the property maintenance code is written, that's what we've adopted as part of our procedures for this, is the property maintenance code, that the maintenance of a property, and they love keeping that maintenance of a property, is pretty much later to a developed property. Once the structure's been removed, even if it's still got continually access to it, if the structure's no longer there, it's gonna develop property, therefore, it can go back into its natural habitat, which is gonna be trees, and, you know, grass, and stuff like that, really, it's gonna go back into a wooded lot, because, you know, the more lots we clear, the more houses we tear down, and that's just more lots that we will be responsible to take care of, and that's just not easy. So once the structure's removed, that lot goes back into its natural, you know, habitat, so. So, moving forward, that's how we wanna approach it, based on a safety issue, case-by-case basis, and, you know, that's the best way we know to approach it. Now, as a city right now, um, you know, we can, there's money still in the budget for this year, this full year, to abate some of these lots, but if we bid this project, these projects out, uh, unless it's already in the process, and some of them are, it takes six weeks to go through the network process, and then another four weeks to get them out, so you're ten weeks from getting anything done before they're done out. That's just, that, there is no short timeline, and that, that's what, that's how long it takes to go through the process to get these bid out, to get them laid, to contract.
Under the nuisance ordinance, this is six weeks is the nuisance ordinance, uh, that we have always used in the past, that's why we're looking at the property maintenance code, hopefully shorten that time period, but, you know, we're not gonna be doing repeated maintenance on these lots, even though that is listed in the nuisance, uh, ordinance that we do have. It's not, uh, cost-effective for us to do this when we have so many that we need to get the first cut on.
But re- repeat which is in the game, we're not gonna be doing.
Repeated maintenance, meaning that we cut it once, and then we go in a couple of months later, we cut it again, because it's grown back up again, we have to give each pro- we need to, you know, prioritize none of the priorities, you know, we need to get those done at least one time during the season.
I think my only concern is that leaves a lot, leaves a lot of gray area to what can and cannot be done. Um, for example, if I get called a more gray from constituent who's in the neighborhood, and there's an issue with a lot that's overgrown and creating a hazard, what I'm making is a hazard, you guys might not think, and so, then my constituents are like, hey, I live here, I, you know, my kids are here, this is creating an issue, and now we can't get them, so that's my only concern and fear, it's in that gray area of not being able to get something done, because there's not really a schlong, like, my answer to what's a hazard, that's not.
My, my concern is, as you said, my unit is elsewhere, probably to a blue face, a lot of the problems we have are all words of sin. So, I'm gonna give you a round of applause, because we, if the cities, if we, the city put us in, the city's gotta be cut out so many times, and I find it because, well, this water's saving, we can't do the thing, tree fall off, off one of those lots, and get somebody to properly, definitely properly, and they issue it back to you, and we gotta get rid of nuisance before we go big, why you have to get it? You know, I mean, it's all that BS all the time, y'all just don't, and, and I get, I understand, uh, the second reason is, is, remember last year, I sent you a fish to fish, and that's what you were supposed to put in somebody, put the owners of the property on the newspaper, only five out of every six, and that's why the property's haven't been developed yet. But now you change all the properties, I'm getting phone calls, and getting stopped in the grocery store a lot of the year. Is there a way to fix this where we're not on a yearly basis? I mean, I know you don't want, things involve, things involve this, things, taxing people, they all say, you know, they're doing a job. What is the ordinance you're putting in, vague registration laws, what's the second reason, how?
There's, there's something else, not to interrupt you, but, um, we can consider receivership, and that'd be something that, you know, we can talk with groups about. It's worked well in other cities where there is a person appointed and is responsible through the courts to take care of those properties, alleviating the city having to worry about them, so that is another option, um, it has been done in Alabama, I do have information on that. Didn't bring it tonight because it is kind of lengthy, and I would like to talk to Bruce about it first, but that would be one option. The other option is, and this is nothing the council can do outside of the fact getting with the legislators, is lowering the limits for landbacking. Because if we can offer these parcels to a developer and have several parcels, maybe four parcels in a block, the city can acquire from the state for a nominal fee, therefore, then we can offer it up to an investor and have them take it, but right now, the limits, we don't reach the limits, we're just like maybe fifty to a hundred properties short of being able to landback, so if the legislature would drop down for classified, or whatever class city we are, drop down those levels, then that's another alternative that we can work with.
But the flip side of that, before we, you know, even think about going that route, the flip side of what she's saying is, if we go that route, then essentially, we're in the real estate business, and we own those properties, so if we can't give them to someone, to a developer, then, then that, then we are responsible. Right now, us, we're not, at that point, we are responsible for them, and we have to.
The reality is, the reality of all this is, just like Dee Dee said, as we go into the grocery store and to the pub, to the constituents, we are the responsible owners of those properties, whether the state, and they're the orders of the state, or someone else, we are the ones that catch the heat for it. You get the call, I get the call, we all get the call, uh, so, we can either address it in a positive way, or say, well, you know, oh, we can keep looking, everybody's sending us other orders of the state, we don't really own those lots, we can't do much about it, we're trying to get the state to do something about it. Well, if the state has, I mean, I like the idea of owning the state accountable for it, but if you look at the entire state, and the number of properties that are in the ward of the state, state's the largest landowner in the state, uh, and that, they, they can't maintain those properties, and no way, uh, you're not gonna have any interstates anymore, you know, the things that you need, you know, to, to be comfortable, and they gotta take that money away, you do it here, we, we can't build any more prisons, we can't, we can't build any more roads, and we can't, we can't fund anymore, if not, development, all we're doing is cutting grass, at this point, we're not really solving anything, so. There's gotta be some kind of happy medium in there, and maybe receivership is, is falling in that lines, or at least selective receivership and all of that, that, I mean, doesn't make sense to receive a single property, but if there's a cluster of them that could be received and transferred to a developer for redevelopment, then, and that becomes a bower.
I just don't wanna sit in the, in the situation like we're in, which is, but I, that's my only, my only con- concern aside, that being a gray area, is determining what's up and safe.
All I'm saying to you, that house, just like the analogy you made about the stick, and cutting grass, nobody will be able to do anything else, it's the same thing with us.
Yeah, but.
If we did the boardwork, that's all we doing, we can't do anything, we're talking about eleven thousand, uh, eleven thousand properties that you, you just talked about. All our acts in council, some guys that, and the supportive guys, that we, if we can't get it right then, we just can't get it right then, or we just gotta find the safety that, with some type of passion that we can give the public that we all want to hold.
That, 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 that's what, that's.
That's part.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm, that's what we're asking, because it can't be sent to us, and then we can't get to it right away tomorrow or the next day, because it, it's, it's, it's impossible, it's not realistic. So what I'm saying, we got to, we cannot be alone eleven thousand, that's not realistic, we all understand that, we don't have funds, we don't have, how, what can we do? Guys from the council, what can, we, what we're talking, we have, if we can't get to it, that's what I'm.
Seven hundred right now, though.
No, I think, that's in the number, that's what I'm saying, what do we?
Yeah, but that, that, that part of it was so strong, that, that, yeah, but, I mean, it was scary, but, but that part right there, that's what needs to go out of PR. I mean, you know, I'm really not saying that, because it sounds different when it comes from the city matter, as opposed to come from the city council.
But when it comes out of the PR, that's, that's the support we got to have.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, so, if, we, we only do the best we can, and that, that's what we, if that's, they can try, and we got to have guys where we cannot, and eleven thousand properties, we only have so much money in there, in there, to actually contract, and that, public works can't stop doing what they want, what's getting done all the time, so that's what I'm saying, is just, I want to, if it's something that they, they put together, maybe it's running out of council, y'all, okay, that's all right, and have Jackson put it out properly, if everybody's good.
Have we looked at, I know we did in the past, there's a no candidate I talked about in the past, uh, but have we looked at farming some of this stuff out to private contractors, do we have a list of private contractors that would currently utilize?
Well, that's what, that's what.
Or, or things like that, so that we're not.
And use that for debris, we talked before, hey, for some of the debris pickers.
Right, they can do both, you know, if, if we go ahead and we contract out for grass cutting, then one of the stipulations in the contract is gonna be any debris that's on the right of way, you know, by that parcel, they may be cutting, they can clean that up, if we have a spot where the yard's kept up, there's a debris pile there, we'll bid that out for the debris pickup, you know, I, I mean.
We all agree with that, I mean, that is some reason.
I think we have to do something, we gotta, we gotta get the trash off the street, y'all, this is, this is getting out of control. I know we're talking about, that's, that's, but we, we kicking that trash can down the road, and it's killing me, I know it's killing all of y'all.
So I feel a lot of it, but.
It's killing me too.
It's killing me too.
But so, but that's what she's saying, so we have a hundred and five dollars on each one.
That's a hundred and five dollars, and that's.
That's an average.
But that's, we definitely do have to pay out.
Yeah, so you talk about picking up debris stuff, adjacent lots, you're pulling.
I still get expensive, that's what I'm saying.
So.
He has gone, like.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I, I think we've been out cleaning all this.
I just, I mean, that's what I'm just going to go.
Yeah, we got to get the trash.
I'm sorry, one question, the priority is one big related to safety, okay? People comment, and they say, you know, there's snakes in here, is that related to safety, or is it just a fire issue?
So that's going to be a case-by-case, here's the thing about snakes and rodents and things, and, you know, this is not going to be possible or ending, so just be ready for that. That's not what happened there. You have snakes in gold, it's just, you have snakes on poor, just like you have snakes, you know, on Fifth and Third Street, snake over a horse, now, it likes the security of grown-over areas, but you see just as many snakes on the road, so they're going to go where they want. That's essentially not a safety issue. I mean, let's be honest, you've got certain parts in the town in this city where people are spending big money to build expensive houses, to be surrounded by woods on as many sides as they can get, and they're not listening to snakes. And I'm sorry, that's an unpopular opinion, but that's just, that's maybe more honesty, so.
If you have snakes, you probably won't have rats, because.
Right, so it's in protest, I mean, I just said it.
Yeah, but you couldn't.
It's very true.
Yes, man, I, I would give you that.
Well, it sounds like we're arguing with you now.
Yeah, I'm going to give you that. I'm going to give you all right. When I give my credit, you know, uh, I don't say.
So we're talking about bidding out for the debris.
I, I, I think, me personally, I think.
And we do it ways more.
No, I, I, I thought we were a little bit way too bad, and that's what I was.
We weren't supposed to, we asked that all, I think we're supposed to.
Yeah, we have a, if our council want to charge, they can, because they're not putting the water out, but nobody's going to pay, like, we're going to charge the people. That, that's my whole thing.
I said, I'm calming out, I was hoping, what, 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 so if you want to, you know.
We asked almost a number of that.
I'm, I'm, I'm moved up there. That, 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 that. I'm moved up there, do we not have a moved up to that?
Mr. Turner's here.
Yes, I think it's about, oh, yeah.
We need an exact number, thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I was thinking, and you say something, and then I'd make the total pickup for, we're going twenty dollars.
But it's, but I, we need to come over, that's where the council wants to go, we don't really need the water coming, because we're going to water, if we're going to charge a fee for the debris pickup, we need to make the debris pickup, and then pay the extra money, the extra money that comes to the city, goes to the city coffers, then we can figure out the number of tops because we're watering, garbage, everybody, you guys, and really, I don't want to put in that situation, because I can ask that question, how many people really, because requirement to be charged, so I can't give you that number, I don't want to put it in that situation.
Well, look, the debris issue is, is got to be a normal problem. Number one, I, I agree with you, we got to raise rates, all right, we, we got to do something to do that. Two is, we got to get some accountability within our citizenry for paying their, their garbage bill when it's due to be paid, because we got a bunch of folks that don't do it. Uh, and then we got a bunch of folks that, I mean, we just about exempted the entire city from paying garbage by different rules and regulations, we need to, we need to track back to something that makes sense, and, and recognize that we do have some people, we have a number of constituents, we all have, that have some legitimate reasons to why that is a burden to them, and if it's properly explained, I, I would like to see us come, like I said before, with some kind of graduated fee structure for, uh, for, based off of income, and, and a requirement to prove that income, in order to fall into that category, you're going to pay the full. Uh, but then, I still think we got to do something else, I mean, listen to David talk about it before, he said, well, it'd be three months before, about, what, about six, three to six months for his cruise, that's unacceptable, I mean, I, it's not, I'm not saying that, David, I'm saying that we all should, should believe that that's unacceptable, that we're going to leave a mattress on the street in front of somebody's house for six months, because we can't get around any of that, we need to hire some, I mean, we need to get, Jack and I talked about this, we need to get some kind of crew in here, or, or a bunch of crews in here, and blitz this town and clean it up, and get it, and get it so that going forward, we can maintain it at that point, but we're just playing so much catch-up that we're not going to ever catch up, y'all, we got to be willing to commit the necessary funds to get it picked up in a two-week time, and, you know, if we got all these crews from other communities, if we got to find a bunch of tree services that can, will utilize the trucks, but I don't care what it is, but there, there's a solution out there, there's no reason that we keep kicking this down the road, we got to make a decision and move.
Well, say something, because the next activity, if we really bid this out, it's kind of, I was going to bid, basically.
That's fine, I can go ahead with that.
And as far as the, uh, the, we've got, trying to start reading that, there's always been the amount that social security's always been there, it's just the fact that it, it's been taken from all people to supplement that system, it's always, always there, what, what you're, it gives you a number, you have to get social security, what's that number test, you know?
I know.
But there's a number there, and we've already started using that, but we had people that said, I'm going to try to capture, and we're exempting when that's not the picture, so we're using what's already in the state right now, and that's what we use, and, and people are not liking it.
I know, I get this pushback, folks, I'm sure we all get a little of that, but the, the, the truth is truth, and what the ordinance says, is what the ordinance says, we got to start, it's just like this money with the schools, we put something on books, we need to be willing to enforce what we're putting on the books, and all people accounted to it, where whoever it is, or whatever it is, we got to start enforcing our rules of rights, or, or we just open ourselves up for it.
Now, exactly. Do, do, do it, you can use that as part.
They were, they were, they were sitting there alone, out, but, but, that's, that's the worst.
Can we mention in the past something, you know, quite for the next more session, um, this is.
I'll, I'll staff, we're going to come up with that number, or something like that, I'm going to, I was going to get it out again, like I said.
I'd be glad to help draft some language with somebody in, in between, in between now and the next meeting, if that's a value to this body, and, uh, you know, I, I'd be glad to work with staff and do some of that, if y'all want me to do that, if you want me to do that, I, I mean, I, I lay off tonight thinking about it, it's my phone ringing.
Okay, let's see this, so, yeah, if we're going to have the next more session, we're going to bid this out, we're supposed to gather in the base with the.
Just real quick, I will give everybody a compliment, the conference plan, this is real quick, the conference plan here, no more meeting, we're going out waiting for the council, as well as the planning commission, to approve, what I recommend to council, and we're, we're drafting a couple, is the order for implementation plan to work, we're, I think we don't need a steering committee as long as we have before, what I have to recommend to council, that we have one person from each ward, and one from the mayor, that's been a point to point to the steering, the implementation constitution, steering committee, to work with the council, as well as the planning commission, to do the implementation plan for the place.
Maybe work on the zoning work.
Right, right, so, yeah, but keep in mind, we're going to zone ours, we don't have a little bit of that, and, and like we did last time, keep in mind, that's a piece of the staff, I have to be in here, and as long as we do that, but we have, but we need dependable people for that steering committee, because we, we, everybody made out, I would say it was only about six people that really were large to that, but if we can find good people on that steering committee.
I think it's important, as we think about those, if your, any of your appointees to that steering committee were good and active and loyal appointees, they ought to be on this file, also community too, because they understand the intricacies of this document better than any of us are ever going to understand it from region, because they built it, and if you can keep those people in there, then I think we can help ourselves.
I sent you all by email the executive summary, it's a six-page document, you can feel free to share that with people, explains the process, the plan, what the implementation component is, so it's a good guide for the layperson, the spot community to read it as opposed to the big textbook document.
And I just ask the council, if we can do that, especially if you want to be the director, you need, uh, people to get, council who was there, uh, and, and I think if we do that, we're quickly about the next meeting, we can have a person there so we can start this process, because we're ready to go.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll send it to you.